The Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Kansas. And the ordinances. Of the City of Andover. And faithfully discharge the duties. As council member. Of the City of Andover. So hopefully not. Congratulations.
We'll start with roll call to my left.
Homer, City Council Member.
Paul, City Council Member.
Jody, City Council Member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Mike Warrington, City Council Member.
Phil Hamilton, City Council Member.
Tim Berry, City Council Member.
Buck Buchanan, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Mike Roosevelt, Deputy Fire Chief.
Rick Landis, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Andrew Kovar in for JT Klaus, City Attorney.
Dana Anstrom, City Clerk.
Jolene Graham, Assistant City Administrator.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
All right, this time I called Jesse Jamerson of Generation Church to lead us in prayer. Sorry, I didn't recognize you, sir. I shook your hand.
That's okay. If you'd bow your heads with me. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for this group of individuals that is willing to sacrifice of their time, Lord, to just continue to move Andover forward. And Lord, we put this meeting in your hands. We ask for wisdom as we continue to plan for this upcoming year. There is so much that has been going on, so much that you have blessed Andover with. And Lord, we are excited and anticipating for what is next to come. But Lord, we just pray for those that are making decisions, for continued wisdom. We pray for patience to deal with the the outside and the people, the complaints and different things that we have to deal with. But overall, Lord, we just pray for a great meeting. We leave it in your hands. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. This time, would you stand with us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time I'll open the floor for a public forum. If you have something you'd like to say, state your name, address, and anybody but you. Keep it short. Keep it, keep it short. Emphasis on keep it short.
My name is Scott Rackley. I live at six three zero East Shade. Mayor of Pride, City Council Members, thank you for your time. Something I wasn't aware of until today. Today is National Law Enforcement Day. So I'd like to take this time to just thank our law enforcement for what they do, putting up with the knuckleheads in the city and people like me. So if you'd stand, I'd like to give you a round of applause.
Short enough? Short enough. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. All right, acceptance of agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to just make sure that everybody did receive the updates. What you have before you should be accurate, but I do want to let you know that we did add a couple items to your consent agenda this afternoon. So you should have seven point one through seven point sixteen. Want to be sure that's what everybody is showing. We did reorder some items so that Courtyards at Cornerstone number ten is in front of number eleven, Series A, two thousand and twenty-four, General Obligation Bonds. And we removed the executive session. And I believe that's it, except when we get to item fourteen point one, it does not change your agenda. I've already talked to Councilman Henry on the hunch he might make your motion. But I do need two separate motions for fourteen point one because we are considering two different cases there. And we provided you with one same motion, just two different cases needed twice. That's my only notes. Thank you.
So do I do the numbers different? Just no, okay.
We just need, I didn't finish, but as presented with the modifications.
Second, I'll revise mine. Second.
All right, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. So, so I don't, so consent agenda is, is complete, right? Okay. I'm so confused right now. Which is not uncommon. Eight, continuing disclosure ordinance.
We got, still got to do number seven though.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I moved to approve consent agenda. Item seven point one through seven point one six is presented.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
I do have a quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
To Mr. Rick. City Hall Lighting Control System. Is this going to be something we have to do every ten years?
I would hope not. But as you know, technology changes over time. And then this one is a little over ten years and parts and such are not quite readily available. We could probably manage to get something up and running. But since we had to go through this, we wanted to get something that would get us through for a longer period of time.
So what's the expectancy of this one? I mean, best guess?
Probably fifteen years. I mean, you know, you, you know, it's, it's electronic, so it really depends. And it depends how long it stays relevant and they continue to make parts for it.
Okay, thank you.
I think that one went like fourteen years, didn't it? Or more?
We're getting close to that, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On that note, Chief Buchanan, on the Flock ten camera, we don't have ten cameras, though, because we're still waiting on those.
No, that's the tenth one. It's the final one. We finally had the other two on Highway fifteen four K dot was able to make an agreement. We had those installed here two, within two weeks ago. And then now this will be the tenth and final one that that one was originally approved, but we relocated it to be a little bit further north.
South to get that neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Eight, continuing disclosure ordinance. Eight point one, restated continuing disclosure ordinance.
Mr. Mayor and Council, as you're aware from our last workshop, Finance Department has put forward a recommendation to make a move from generally accepted auditing principles to K-MAG, Kansas Municipal Auditing and Accounting Guidelines. Part of that decision, though, would mean that we need to update our continuing disclosure ordinance because it indicates that the kind of financial reporting that we do, and it indicates that it's based on GAAP. So if we don't change this prior to waiving the GAAP, you will essentially be breaking your ordinance or your law on the day that we do that. So we need to first fix that ordinance to say that we'll be using K-MAG guidelines for financial reporting. And then we'll bring you at the next meeting a resolution to waive GAAP. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Jenny, will this have to be done every year as well as when we do the K-MAG? Every year?
No, it will not. This, this ordinance is sort of an ongoing policy undertaking. And so until you would make some other change that might affect this, it would just stay in place.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Why can't we just throw an or in there? That way we wouldn't have to. We could do either one. Because, I mean, are we specifically asking? Deciding on? Sorry, I'm getting confused. The GAAP?
Yeah, so this, this does switch, so to back up, I'm sure you guys covered this in your, in your workshop. But you know, this, this covers what kind of ongoing compliance you have to report to the, the Emma system, which is the SEC system for your, your bond obligations. And so, yeah, this, this does switch you to the, the Kansas Municipal Accounting and Audit Guidelines. We could put in or GAAP. We could adjust it to have or if you feel like.
I didn't know if that would be easier.
I suppose we could have the option.
To come back, but.
I would say we could probably just as easily bring the ordinance back if we get into it and decide we don't like the K-MAG.
You don't make this kind of change very often.
Okay.
It'll just be a smoother process just to say this is what we're, this is what we're using.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. All right, nine one, annual account software contract.
Before you tonight, Mayor and Council, is the contract with Tyler Technologies for the annual maintenance of our software. It is within the two thousand and twenty-four budget. And I'm asking authorization to pay that invoice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Homer, did you have a question?
No.
No. I move that we, we authorize payment to Tyler Technologies for the renewal of the annual software contract in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Ten one, courtyard at Cornerstone amending resolution. And Jenny will speak to us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, your bond counsel and city attorney, JT Klaus, did catch a typo that had been made, or a clerical error would be the best way to say that. For in the amending, well, in the resolution for courtyards at Cornerstone that was previously approved, the reorder of the agenda tonight was because courtyards at Cornerstone are part of the General Obligation Bond, Series A, two thousand and twenty-four, that we'll consider in the next item. So the clerical error you were fixing here in this item ten needed to happen before we go into those next items. I would be happy to answer any questions. But again, Andrew is here, both in your city attorney and your bond counsel capacity as well.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an amending resolution of advisability related to the courtyards at Cornerstone addition.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an amending resolution of advisability related to the courtyards at Cornerstone addition.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Eight, continuing disclosure ordinance. Eight point one, restated continuing disclosure ordinance.
Mr. Mayor and Council, as you're aware from our last workshop, Finance Department has put forward a recommendation to make a move from generally accepted auditing principles to K-MAG, Kansas Municipal Auditing and Accounting Guidelines. Part of that decision, though, would mean that we need to update our continuing disclosure ordinance because it indicates that the kind of financial reporting that we do, and it indicates that it's based on GAAP. So if we don't change this prior to waiving the GAAP, you will essentially be breaking your ordinance or your law on the day that we do that. So we need to first fix that ordinance to say that we'll be using K-MAG guidelines for financial reporting. And then we'll bring you at the next meeting a resolution to waive GAAP. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Jenny, will this have to be done every year as well as when we do the K-MAG?
Yep.
Every year?
No, it will not. This, this ordinance is sort of an ongoing policy undertaking. And so until you would make some other change that might affect this, it would just stay in place.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Why can't we just throw an or in there? That way we wouldn't have to. We could do either one. Because, I mean, are we specifically asking? Deciding on? Sorry, I'm getting confused. The GAAP?
Yeah, so this, this does switch, so to back up, I'm sure you guys covered this in your, in your workshop. But you know, this, this covers what kind of ongoing compliance you have to report to the, the Emma system, which is the SEC system for your, your bond obligations. And so, yeah, this, this does switch you to the, the Kansas Municipal Accounting and Audit Guidelines. We could put in or GAAP. We could adjust it to have or if you feel like.
I didn't know if that would be easier.
I suppose we could have the option.
To come back, but.
I would say we could probably just as easily bring the ordinance back if we get into it and decide we don't like the K-MAG.
You don't make this kind of change very often.
Okay.
It'll just be a smoother process just to say this is what we're, this is what we're using.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. All right. Nine one, annual account software contract.
Before you tonight, Mayor and Council, is the contract with Tyler Technologies for the annual maintenance of our software. It is within the two thousand and twenty-four budget. And I'm asking authorization to pay that invoice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Homer, did you have a question?
No.
No. I, I move that we, we authorize payment to Tyler Technologies for the renewal of the annual software contract in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Ten one, courtyard at Cornerstone amending resolution. And Jenny will speak to us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, your bond counsel and city attorney, JT Klaus, did catch a typo that had been made, or a clerical error would be the best way to say that. For in the amending, well, in the resolution for courtyards at Cornerstone that was previously approved, the reorder of the agenda tonight was because courtyards at Cornerstone are part of the General Obligation Bond, Series A, two thousand and twenty-four, that we'll consider in the next item. So the clerical error you were fixing here in this item ten needed to happen before we go into those next items. I would be happy to answer any questions. But again, Andrew is here, both in your city attorney and your bond counsel capacity as well.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an amending resolution of advisability related to the courtyards at Cornerstone addition.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question real fast for Ms. Jenny.
Okay.
How do we prevent that error from happening again?
Well, that would be difficult because it was made by somebody trying to fix an error. And just didn't get it fixed correctly. So it was somebody's best efforts, but it just didn't, it unfortunately didn't work out all the way.
Usually if there's a problem, I always like to figure out what the solution is to prevent it, so.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. All right. Eleven one, Series A, two thousand and twenty-four, General Obligation Bonds. Certificate of Total Final Costs. And Donna will speak to us on this.
We are now getting ready to issue our next series of bonds. And as part of that, the accounting department and bond counsel have gone through. We've calculated all the final costs. And we're asking you now to certify that those are the final cost for these projects.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the certificate of final costs for Cornerstone Fifth, Prairie Creek Sixth, Heritage Second, and Spayside at Terradyne Estates subdivision, Courtyards at Cornerstone Improvements, and Lakeview Heights Improvements.
Second. Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Jenny or Council. Since I do live in Lakeview Heights, should I recuse myself?
Do you know if you, are you in one of the lots that would be assessed, special assessments under this?
Yes.
Yeah, then you probably should.
Good job. All right, okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll recuse myself on this.
Mr. Mayor? I need to recuse myself also.
See what you started?
Yeah.
All right, here we are. So.
One, two.
We still have votes, so. We still have a quorum. Two. Mike Warrington and Paul Weimer, Weimer, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor? On the, I guess, I don't know who this question goes to, but so it's, it's listed as courtyards at Cornerstone Improvements. But those aren't done yet. So is it, why is it called improvements there?
They are done. Courtyards at Corner. You're thinking of the cottages. That's the next one.
Okay.
They just started. This is the first part of that area over there.
This is the roads done in the courtyards? Okay.
So does Councilman Henry and Councilperson Jody, are they?
No, we don't live in that neighborhood.
Okay. Okay. I'm just checking, man. Get myself in trouble.
All right, we'd have to, we'd have to separate them all out.
So we do have a quorum. All right, thank you. All right, any further questions, discussions, or anything of that matter? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.
All right, the next part of this is to adopt a resolution to set the public hearing for February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, to allow the public that are affected by these specials to come in and be heard if they have any questions or concerns. As part of this, I will also be mailing out notifications to all of the properties on record, property owners on record.
Okay, and again, we'll we'll have council members recusing themselves, and I'll let them do that. I'll start with Mike.
Mr. Mayor, I'll recuse myself on eleven point two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself on eleven point two.
And did I read that, what we were talking about? The Series A, two thousand and twenty-four, General Obligation Bond Public Hearing Resolution eleven two. So, okay, I wasn't sure if I did or not. All right, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution to set a public hearing for February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, to hear public input on the special assessments for Cornerstone Fifth, Prairie Creek Sixth, Heritage Second at Spayside at Terradyne, Estates subdivision, courtyards at Cornerstone Improvements, and Lakeview Heights Improvements.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? Again, for the public, we'll have four people voting. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Microsoft Office twelve, Microsoft Office three six five licensing's upgrade, twelve one oh three six five licensing upgrade. And Neil is going to speak to us about this. How you doing, sir?
Doing good, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Before you this evening is a request to upgrade our Office three sixty-five licensing. This licensing is what allows us to use Microsoft Office Suite along with additional Microsoft services. This request will provide the same version of Office to all city staff, as well as provide enhancements such as the ability to send encrypted email, mobile device management, and also allows users to perform self password resets. The IT department has received quotes directly from Microsoft, as well as three additional vendors. We are requesting approval to upgrade our licenses with the trusted tech team out of Irvine, California, which has the lowest quote. That quote's coming in at thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty annually. And that is, those funds are included in the two thousand and twenty-four adopted budget. And I'll be able, happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Neil, it's just weird to me, but how is another vendor lower than Microsoft themselves?
That's the way it works. They sell in bulk.
That's normal, is that?
Yeah, they sell so much in bulk, they're a gold partner of Microsoft. And so they, they sell them to them less. And they could sell them a little more than Microsoft, but they don't. They sell in bulk.
Okay, so is trusted tech team a reputable company and we, this isn't like a black market?
Correct, yeah. They're a gold partner of Microsoft, been certified as a gold partner, yeah.
Just want to make sure because sometimes we, we want to save money for the city so bad that we find the cheapest vendor possible.
No, that's a good question.
Picks us in the butt, so, okay, thank you.
They're legit, yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So what, I mean, what have we been doing up to this point, then? I mean, has it been being done wrong?
No, we've, we switched. In two thousand and twenty-three, we switched purchasing the license directly from Microsoft. So we were paying a little bit more for them. We've also got some city employees that are using Office two thousand and sixteen, which is about to be retired. This will allow all users to go to the Office three sixty-five platform, which always keeps them up to date. And again, it comes with the enhanced features of the mail encryption, which is important for PD. Right now, they're doing a lot of faxing. This will stop the faxing and allow them to send email encrypted and more protected.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself on eleven point two.
And did I read that, what we're talking about? The series A 2024 general obligation bond public hearing resolution eleven two, so, okay, I wasn't sure if I did or not. All right, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I moved to adopt a resolution to set a public hearing for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. To hear public input on the special assessments for Cornerstone Fifth, Prairie Creek Sixth, Heritage Second at Speyside at Terradyne Estates subdivision. Courtyards at Cornerstone improvements and Lakeview Heights improvements.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? Again, for the public, we'll have four people voting, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. Microsoft Office twelve, Microsoft Office three six five licensing's upgrade, twelve one oh three six five licensing upgrade. And Neil is going to speak to us about this, how you doing, sir?
Doing good, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Before you this evening is a request to upgrade our Office three sixty-five licensing. This licensing is what allows us to use Microsoft Office Suite along with additional Microsoft services. This request will provide the same version of Office to all city staff. As well as provide enhancements such as the ability to send encrypted email. Mobile device management and also allows users to perform self password resets. The IT department has received quotes directly from Microsoft as well as three additional vendors. We are requesting approval to upgrade our licenses with the trusted tech team out of Irvine, California. Which has the lowest quote, that quote's coming in at thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty annually. And that is, those funds are included in the 2024 adopted budget. And I'll be able, happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Neil, it's just weird to me, but how is another vendor lower than Microsoft themselves?
That's the way it works, they sell in bulk.
That's normal, is that?
Yeah, they sell so much in bulk, they're a gold partner of Microsoft. And so they, they sell them to them less, and they could sell them a little more than Microsoft, but they don't, they sell in bulk.
Okay, so is trusted tech team a reputable company, and we, this isn't like a black market?
Correct, yeah, they're a gold partner of Microsoft, been certified as a gold partner, yeah.
Just want to make sure, because sometimes we, we want to save money for the city so bad that we find the cheapest vendor possible.
No, that's a good question.
Picks us in the butt, so, okay, thank you.
They're legit, yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So what, I mean, what have we been doing up to this point, then, I mean, has it been being done wrong?
No, we've, we switched, in 2023, we switched purchasing the license directly from Microsoft. So we were paying a little bit more for them. We've also got some city employees that are using Office two thousand and sixteen, which is about to be retired. This will allow all users to go to the Office three sixty-five platform, which always keeps them up to date. And again, it comes with the enhanced features of the mail encryption, which is important for PD. Right now, they're doing a lot of faxing, this will stop the faxing and allow them to send email encrypted and more protected. The mobile device management's pretty important, too, we've got a lot of iPads throughout the city. And being able to track those with Microsoft with these new licenses will be a much better method.
Thank you, Neil.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I moved to accept the proposal to upgrade Office three sixty-five licensing and purchase the licenses from trusted tech team Irvine, California.
Second.
Do I need to give it an amount?
I didn't, I didn't list an amount on there because the licensing can go up and down, so I didn't want to put a cap on it. Because depending on if we need more licensing, that amount could adjust slightly.
Yeah, I think if you wanted an amount, you could say the per, at a per license cost of eighteen dollars and seventy cents, because that shouldn't change. But to Neil's point, you could go from one oh six to one oh seven or something like that.
Sure, thank you.
Can I get a motion?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing, and then Tim.
Yep.
No further discussions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you, Neil. Public work purchase lawnmowers, thirteen one, public work equipment purchase lawnmowers. And Rick will speak to us on this.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this happens to be one of those cases where we're not actually necessarily taking just the lowest bid on each item. There was some variations from the desired minimum specifications on a couple of units. That were substantial enough that we wanted to go with slightly higher bid. On the two stand-on mowers, the horsepower on the item that was submitted was, is a horsepower under our specifications. And we found that to be a little bit of concern. And additionally, that it, it went in half inch increments. And our landscaping plans that we've adopted recently is we're trying to control that height cut a little bit more, so we're not necessarily having to always cut off. Three quarters of an inch if we get behind or something like that, you know, we can, can adjust that a little bit more. And then the, on the six foot deck, the seventy-two inch deck. The lowest priced mower in that category, the biggest issue for us on that was the warranty did not include labor. Specifically did not include labor in the warranty. And also that mower also did half inch increments on the deck. The mowers in front of you from Hoover Mower Sales, that we did recommend to Council for approval. Have those items included in its specifications. I would be happy to stand for any questions if you have any.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Rick, do we intend the old mowers, are we going to sell them and then use those funds to go towards the purchase of these new ones, or what's the plan with the old ones?
So what we do with our old mowers is we move in, out into a secondary role. And then we take, we just kind of keep moving them down. And then, yeah, I don't know what we're going to do with these exactly, we've given one in the past, you know, at the end of it to the golf course that needed a mower. They generally don't have much value, by the time we've ran them for five or six years, it's a lot of, a lot of hours on them.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I want to move to accept the bid from Hoover Mower Sales for two stand-on mower units in the amount of twenty-four thousand, two ninety-six. And accept the bid from Hoover Mower Sales for a single seventy-two inch ZTR mower in the amount of fourteen thousand, nine forty-two.
Second.
All right, any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Rick, why do we go stand-up versus seated ones?
Good question, I meant to cover that, and, and it didn't. So we currently have one stand-up unit in our inventory, we typically use it like around City Hall, where we have some of our higher touch level. Fescue areas around facilities and such. We also tend to use those more on the right of ways, and as you are probably aware. The city has several road projects that we're expanding the amount of high-touch roadway mowing that we'll be doing in islands and such that are narrower. So we want a little narrower device, and they don't carry as much weight, and they don't compact the soil as much. So it's a little combination of reasons on those, a seven, a six foot deck just doesn't do us a lot of good on there, it's, you end up having to trim a lot and such.
Thanks, Rick.
Anyone else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero. Fourteen one.
Mr. Mayor, if I can pull an audible and ask us to go out of order and do skip to item fifteen, sixteen, and then we'll come back and hit fourteen. After we've consulted with your community development director on the phone.
Thank you. All right, fifteen one, new park naming.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, we're excited to bring fifteen point one to you tonight for your consideration. Bit of background, since we have some new members on this project. Staff have been working to implement several priorities from our Andover Parks and Rec playbook twenty thirty master plan. For more than a year now. Some of those priorities relate to our park system inventory. And a couple of those factors include improving our natural spaces and our trails in our park system. And also adding park amenities that are south of Kellogg. So staff identified some opportunities at the wastewater treatment plant. In the northeast portion of that property as an option to install some nature trails. And we had PEC develop some renderings and staff mapped a one and a half mile route on that portion of the property. And we presented this to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and at Council Workshop for, for review. The twenty twenty-three CIP budget allocated funds to put towards this project. And those have been expended already, and we've been working with some scouting volunteering groups. As well as Parks and Recreation staff to get the trail network installed, a parking area gated access signage, et cetera, ready to go. So we're, we're, we're going to be close in the next couple of weeks. And hoping to do a potential rimbit cutting on February first, Thursday evening, similar to what we did at Thirteenth Groundbreaking and the Redbud Trailhead. So it's time to start discussing the official formal name of the park. This was discussed at the December thirteenth Prab meeting. And the focus centered around our general tradition in Andover to include. The rough location of that park in the formal name. And oftentimes appeal to the primary activity that is found at that park. For example, Thirteenth Street Sports Park, as example gives you both of those factors, a location and a general activity. Coming out of the December thirteenth Prab meeting, their recommendation to you. The governing body would be to adopt the formal park name as Harry Street Nature Trail Park. I'm available for any questions you might have about this project or the particular step we're in right now, but we'll leave it for your discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Mike.
First, will you have a kiosk out front that will say the name of the park and also have the, the route location on there as well?
We're working with Dana in Public Works on official park signage up at the front. A formal kiosk like with a cupboard on it has not really been discussed, but definitely the not, the name that we all adopt. The general hours that'll be opened on to dusk and then a route. We can also put this online as part of our park inventory. On the, on the city website as well, with information about it.
Will you have mile markers or bollards out there to mark, you know, the trail? And, you know, the, for the one mile, one and a half mile, or et cetera?
We can definitely do that, we have not explored that option totally. We do have it marked with blazes right now. And it's a full mulched path, a little over six feet wide. So the, the blazes are not exactly necessary for route finding, in a sense, but we could add some interpretive panels in the future. Distance markings and all that kind of, there's, there's a lot of options down there to enhance that visitor experience down there.
Will this be for mostly foot traffic, walking, hiking, running?
Foot, foot traffic only.
Okay, I think you answered the, it was just, it's all mulch, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, mulch from, from the?
Mulch from the tornado. Proceeds, if you want to call it that, we, we probably only used about a third of that material, there is still a large supply.
How wide will the, will the path be?
It's a little over six feet wide, we can get our UTVs through the entire route.
Any wetlands you have to worry about, or if it storms that the, the river, creek, whatever, overflows and messes anything up?
So the majority of the trail follows the perimeter of the roughly seven acre row crop field that was in the northeast corner. That'll be converted to native grasses this spring. I am sure there has been historical times where that property has flooded, is, it is within the one hundred year flood plain line. That's why this type of use is appealing at that site. And it avoids us from potentially putting in expensive and prohibitive development type uses. So I, we haven't, we have kept it off the bottom area. But I would imagine in the next five, 10 years, it might be an event that we would have to do some repairs in some areas, but we don't expect that on a regular basis.
I was kind of thinking of a kiosk similar to, like the disc golf one that shows the map and shows the name and, you know, you know. Where gas, where garbage cans are and a bench or something like that.
Yeah.
Maybe some measurements, too, you know, this, from here to here is a mile, or?
Yeah. Attached in your packet is our GIS map that was put in with the software and, and the, the GIS equipment. It's fairly accurate, it's not a, an estimate type thing. We could transfer that to a lot of the materials available, and we can, we have the ability to do that in-house now with the Public Works sign shop, so.
Will you, will you also put this on All Trails mapping system and, because I think you can, you can add it as a new trail. And, and it'll be used more often, you know, just by people who just want to come and try it.
Yeah, very, very true, and you could give us our first five star rating.
Yep. Okay, I think that, that was all my questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On the, on your GIS map that Daniel that you provided, actually, I really appreciate that, the meadow path identified, is that, so we. I assume the one point five mile total distance is one loop around the exterior. If you took the metal, the meadow path, is that like exactly point seven five or something, half of it, or is that? Is that kind of like the chicken exit, like if I get out there and I'm a little bit winded, can I take the meadow path? You're like, this is way too long.
You turn around.
Right, oh, Tim, good idea.
You can, there are shortcut options, yes. The one point five is an aggregate of all of the mulch available out there. I'm pretty sure it was just not the perimeter only, it included the, if you were to, to do the cutoff as well.
Oh, okay, all right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Not, not so much a question, Daniel, for you, but just a comment to the whole Public Works staff on that. I mean, as Mike, Mike brought up with being in the flood plain, I think this is a great, amazing use of city property. You know, we say funds, but it sounds like you had a lot of volunteers helping out, too, so thanks to, thank the Boy Scouts for us as well for helping in build the trail or all the scouts that, that helped. I think it's amazing, and like you said before, you know, we, we say that park plan and stuff, but when we were doing those. Doing that plan, I mean, a lot of it was, there's no park really south of Kellogg, so this will really help out. And I can't wait to give it a five star rating, so let me know when that comes about, all right?
One more, one last question, will there be a, a little exit route over to the sewer plant if someone needs to go to the restroom?
No, we've, we've, we've actually met with Brian Walls, your wastewater department manager. And to satisfy the, the operational requirements on the property, we do have to, to mark. The west side of the creek as off limits to public access. So these, these trails and, and, and the public's access will be limited to the, to the east side of that waterway there.
Yeah, I was being a little funny, but.
Well, very little.
All right. Any further, how about a?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to accept the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's recommendation to name the trail system. At the wastewater facility property, the Harry Street Nature Trail Park.
Second. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries six zero, thank you, Daniel. Sixteen one, mayoral appointment, four years, and I finally said that right, did you catch that? Four years.
What'd you say?
Which one, what was that title again?
Which one are we on, Mr. Mayor?
Sixteen one, I'm sorry.
What, what's the name of it?
I'm not doing it again.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have to say about this is we're a little bit behind in putting this appointment in front of you all because Dana started last week. But in order for her to attest all of the documents tonight, we need you to formally go ahead and appoint her into this role. So sorry for the delay, we should have taken care of this in December.
Do we need to remove the interim, was there an interim city clerk or anything? Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I moved to appoint the most amazing Dana Ingstrom as the city clerk effective January second, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any further questions or discussion?
Do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I think for Jenny, moving forward, is there a way we can just charter out of this requirement of appointing a city clerk? Or is that something that we absolutely have to have, or?
You have to have a city clerk, but how you appoint it might be a different question.
Yeah, you have to have a city clerk, and that would be an interesting question, can you charter out from under it, I wouldn't recommend it. I mean, you probably already charted out from underneath the statute that requires it anyway, and set your own.
Right.
Procedures for all of that, but it, it would, it would certainly be unusual to take away the ability of the, the mayor and the council to appoint who the city clerk is.
I mean, because I know we did it for the fire chief, and we've done it for others, I'm just thinking, because she has been working for us for an entire week already as city clerk. So I was just kind of curious to make that process a little bit more streamlined.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero. Welcome aboard. Okay, are we ready for to move forward with the fourteen one? Okay. Fourteen one zoning amendment, three hundred and three thirty south, Andover Road Z dash A two three dash oh 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 five. I'm sorry, zero 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 five, and?
No. Do we do them separate?
We, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to address them separately.
Okay, and then as, we also will, we vote separately though, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go through the checklist twice, okay.
All right, so, and so we also will be addressing Z dash A two three dash zero 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 six. Anybody?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, before you tonight are two properties that are recommended to you by the Planning Commission at their December nineteenth meeting. To change the zoning from SF one to B three. That single family residential to retail and service business district. And the reason they are two properties is that they were controlled by two different owners at the beginning of the rezoning process. So that is the reason for the two different motions for tonight. I do have here, Mr. Mayor, a checklist, if you do not have one in front of you, I could approach the bench, okay?
Thank you. Can I do it for each one, is that correct, or just one?
Checklist for each one, Mr. Mayor.
All right. This is an application to zoning district classification from. This is an application to zoning district classification from the SF one family, single family residential. District to B three resident, I'm sorry, B three. Retail and service business district on the property generally located at three hundred and three thirty south Andover Road and over Kansas. Before we before we proceed with the hearing, I'd like to ask. The council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have conflict of interest.
No, sir.
No, sir.
No.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes, sir.
Um, should we just say that we're doing this for number three hundreds?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, okay, all right, okay.
And that okay, so it's for. Okay, which one is five and which one is six? Does it matter? Okay, so let's just do it this way. Z dash A two, three dash zero, 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 five. And we covered the disqualification and the call of the agenda. Expartee communication. Thank you, Mike. Export ex parte communication. I will now ask the council if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communications prior to this agenda item. Which they would like to share.
No.
Has the city clerk received any protestation protest petitions on this case?
The city clerk's office has not received any communication.
Okay. I now ask the council members if they have all received copies of the draft minutes of the Planning Commission for December nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Which summarizes the hearings of the case.
Yes.
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 Yes. Is Mr. Mangus on the phone? I now call on city zoning administrator. Jolene Graham to provide us with a report on this case.
Uh, as I mentioned before, this is uh two existing single family residential properties to change the zoning to retail and service business district. It is in uh compliance and compatibility with the other lots surrounding it.
Okay, thank you. Has any written communication been received by the city clerk?
No, sir.
We would like to welcome everyone interested in this agenda. We would like to welcome anyone interested in this agenda item to come to the podium and give your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The governing body has been provided. The draft minutes and the video of the public hearing has been made available. So please limit your comments to information not previously shared at any public at the public hearing held on December nineteen, twenty twenty three. Does anyone from the public have any new information? Does the applicant have any further response? Will we have applicant announce? No. Okay. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on the case. You have received an outline of the choices provided under state statutes for council action. KSA twelve dash seven fifty seven C. How do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the findings of fact and recommend the city council approve zoning case Z A two, three dash zero, 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 five. Changing the zoning district classification of the subject property from the existing. SF one, single family residential, low density district to the B three retail and service business district.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. All right, on to. Z dash A two, three dash zero, 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 six. And that will be the address of three thirty south Andover Road. This application to be changed, this is an application to goodness, man. This is an application to change the zoning district classification from the SF dash one. Single family residential district to the B three retail and service business district on a property general. Property generally located at. Three thirty south Andover Road and over Kansas. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll I'll ask the city council if any of them have intended. To disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest.
No.
No.
No. I will now ask council if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communication prior to this agenda item which they would like to share.
No.
No.
No. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions on this case?
No, sir.
I now ask the council members if they have all received copies of the draft minutes. Of the Planning Commission for December nineteenth, twenty twenty three, which summarizes the hearing on the case.
Yes.
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 I will now call on. Um, Assistant City Administrator Jolene Graham to provide us with a report on this case.
Mr. Mayor and council members, it is the same as your previous item. From single family residential to uh B three retail and service business district and compatible with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Does the application, does the applicant wish to present any new information? We would like to welcome everyone interested in this agenda item to come to the podium and give your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The governing body has been provided. The draft minutes and the video of the public hearing has been made available, so please limit your comments to information not previously shared at the public hearing. Held on December nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Does anyone from the public have any new information? No. Does the applicant have any further response? No. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case. You have received an outline of the choices provided under the statute state statutes for council action. KSA twelve dash seven fifty seven C. Council, how do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the findings of fact and recommend that the city council approve zoning case Z A two, three dash zero, 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 six. Changing the zoning district classification of the subject properties from the existing SF dash one, single family residential, low density district. To the B three retail and service business district.
Anyone?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Yes, sir. Pardon me?
The last part of your checklist?
Oh, did I not finish something? Oh, okay, thank you. Thanks, sir. Uh, persons agreed by, thank you, Tim. Persons agreed by the final decision of council on this matter have thirty days after today's action within. Within which to appeal to the district court. Right? Thank you, Bill. All right. And we are at member items. And we'll start with the. Councilman Homer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Man, Rick, I think we were, some of us were talking before the meeting. Just want to thank you and the the Streets Department for getting the roads cleared off uh today. Mother nature help, but I mean, at the same time. Definitely a considerable difference. Then to some of the other surrounding cities, if you will. And I think Andover Street Department did an amazing job getting those cleared off for us. Thanks to the staff, Jenny sent. You know, kind of a funny email that we weren't going to be opening until noon. And then we already, by the time she finally got to work, we already had, you know, three, three people that were already at at work. So that's amazing. So thank you to those staff that I I don't know who's who the names were, but. That's amazing to see that and and help get keep the city running and and open. So, you know, just with that, I I appreciate all the staff does. And, you know, Rick, give a special shout out to the the snow removal crew, if you will.
I will do so. I would also include in that that your Parks Department. Did a phenomenal job with all the facilities again, so it's kind of a team effort amongst the Public Works Department. And I appreciate you telling me thanks, but I I take no uh. No uh. Successful compliments on that. It all goes to the staff and I will pass it on now. Thank you.
Hey, every team needs a great leader, right? That's why the mayor's here.
I'm assuming you won't be getting a Christmas present from Ms. McCosland after that comment. But thank you very much. More money for me.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'd just like to echo a council member Homer's sentiments toward the city. Um, but I'd also like to just uh say my great deal thanks for everybody with the onboarding. Um, coming on the city council, um, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, um, city staff, thank you guys so much. You guys have made this really um a smooth transition and I'm looking forward to uh the next four years.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to echo both of them.
And that's all you're obligated to do. All right. Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, um, hope everyone had a great holidays and ready for this twenty twenty four season coming up and. Uh, also echoing what um Homer said on the snow removal. It was awesome seeing um the trucks go down our new road of pushing the snow away. And not, you know, taking half the gravel that used to used to be there and and but it was it was really great and they did it nice and smooth and. And very fast, so it was a good job if you wouldn't mind telling them. Um, a little more data here that I got from a WAMPO meeting today I went to. Um, I've sent some stuff over to Jenny as well and gave a copy to the mayor. Um, but we've got some really good um data that comes out of WAMPO. Um, every year and pretty much every month um on stats of where's well. Go back a little bit. There's twenty twenty two cities uh that are or areas in in the WAMPO area that provide, you know, data to the whole area. And one of the cool things that they had, and if anyone wants a copy of this uh on on council, I wouldn't mind, you know, giving it to you. So, you know, this is just, you know, data that about our city. From all all different ages and the and our house value averages are. You know, our home income averages, our education, how many um households are in, you know, Andover. And it's just a just a lot of just really good information. If anyone just, you know, let me know and I'll email you a copy of it. Um, but one of the other really cool things that we talked about today was. Where our people work. And one of the datas that came out uh is that we have over thirty five hundred people that come into Andover to work. Uh, every day. Uh, we have about six hundred and eight people who live here and work here at the same time. But then we also have six over sixty two hundred people that leave Andover and work elsewhere. So that was uh and we were like number three uh, you know, behind Wichita and Derby. Um, and and the whole stats, uh, which was, you know, impressive as well, too, so. Um, if anyone's ever interested in that, I wouldn't mind sharing, you know, it, you know, by email as well, too, but. Lot lot of good information that comes out of WAMPO. They help us out with tons and tons of uh road and traffic improvements and uh. Um, I think we have more coming on down down the pipeline soon, too.
Thank you. So I had. Very good information. I liked it. Thank you, sir.
I've got two items. I'll start with the most important one, in my opinion. After nearly six hundred on time payrolls, tens of thousands of bills paid. Numerous regulatory filings being made on time. Miss Donna has announced her retirement. And for everyone that's ever received a paycheck on time, thank you, Donna. That's that's a big deal. Twenty five years is a long time of service and especially to do your job so well like you have done. Thank you for that. My second item, for whoever the good Samaritans were that showed up and plowed the Andover Senior Center a couple of times over the past couple of weeks. Thank you. It's because of people like that stepping up and seeing a need and serving in that capacity that makes this. One, one of the best communities to live in, so that's all I got.
Cool. And if you need yard work done, JJ's Landscape does a great job. They're one of the ones that took care of the senior center, too. Jenny, where are we at with ASM and the amphitheater? I saw in your in your notes, you know, you we they. Done some hiring or something like that, but are we, do we have a timeline of concerts or anything? Do we have anything from them?
They just took over management on January first. They have hired a director and they will be sending out a press release next week announcing that person's name. Um, and they will begin work on January twenty second here at City Hall. Um, there is nothing to announce um concerts yet, but I believe a lot of that will fall into place once the directors and.
Okay, perfect. I just, we haven't heard anything for a while.
Sure.
Um, I want to thank, reach, uh, reach out to Ms. Cassie Connolly. She's the theater teacher at Andover Central High. She did win Drama Teacher of the Year for this area. I apologize for Andover, for the Trojan side. My kids don't go there, so I don't get all that information like I do for the for the Jaguar side. But um there were several uh drama kids, Thespian uh students that received superior and excellent ratings through their. Um, program this past weekend, so I just want to reach out and thank thank all the drama and Thespian kids there, so. Other besides that, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing else.
All right, thank you. We've got a, we've got a lot of new faces around, uh, some on city staff, uh. Three now, three new city staff members. A lot of change over in the end of the year, three new council members and but I want to take this time to just say thank you to and thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Uh, so I want to thank the people that were here before us. You know, there's been a lot of people through the years that make this city what it is. And they've teed a lot of things up for us that we can be successful. Um, and I want to thank Troy, uh, Troy Tabor again for his twelve years of service. So there was a lot of work done before us and teed it up for us to be successful. And uh, uh, the people that left us at the end of the year, Susan Renner, um. Lance Onstot and uh. Justin Constantino, a lot of people did a lot of work but to get us to where we can succeed and I'd like to thank them. With that said, I'm I've never been, I've never ever been more excited. I always loved being the mayor of Andover. I say it all the time. But I've never been more excited about being mayor of Andover than I am today. We got new eyes on a on a s- some problems that are exist and. And eyes on things that are good, so there's been a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity for us to do successful things and. I couldn't be surrounded by a better group of people to do it and I'm just very thankful, so. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have one more thing. I I did, you know, Tim, you always talk about some businesses in town and brought up JJ's and stuff. I I had the opportunity to use Andover Rental today for a generator. And uh drove out here because we had some a transformer that caught fire and so. Use Nathan saying he's got some big changes coming at at his business. Um, remodeling and such that that uh he'll have a ribbon cutting as well or a, you know, new grand opening. Um, and then an update from the Long Term Recovery Committee for the the tornado survivors and stuff. We, I think Jenny, I would I would be remiss if I probably didn't say this, but Jenny and I probably are still amazed that we have new cases. Still coming to the committee. In in regards to thinking, oh, you know, if you still have money left, yeah, you know, I'll I'll put in my stuff. But then also people that had never talked to Mark or the United Way before, so make sure. You know, don't forget about it. Make sure people still know. If you could talk to, you know, your HOA folks, um, people that were affected in the community. Just reach out and say, have you ever, have you ever dialed two on one and said, hey, I, you know, I need. Help with anything that had to do with the tornado, so that's it.
One last thing, I want to throw this out to our neighbors to the west. Uh, I went to the inaugural flight. It's a one nonstop flight. To from which ICT to Washington DC. And so uh it's not just a political state. There are history. There's a lot of history out there. So uh use this uh opportunity so we don't lose this opportunity because it's a big day for. For our area to have a nonstop flight to DC from Wichita, Kansas, so. It was a, it was a good time to go there and and see uh, see the excitement for it, so if we don't use it. Eventually we'll lose it, so fly to Washington. I plan to this spring. All right? Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.